Okay. Are you ready? Will you believe me?
Have we gabbled in?
They have the new, you have the new computers?
I think he's gonna get the light when you're on.
Seven o'clock exam.
There we go.
Good evening. This is the meeting of the Scarborough Board of Education. It is September 3rd, 2015. Welcome back to school, everybody. So, do we have the attendance?
Ms. Beely?
Here.
Ms. DeCassio?
Here.
Ms. Massengill?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Shea?
Here.
Ms. Hartle?
Very good. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, there are none.
Do we have a superintendent's report?
We do. Um, I'm happy to start off, actually, the superintendent's report. Um, we'd like to share a video from this summer, and this is the Scarborough Summer Reading Academy. We have Lori Bloom and Megan Hart here as well, and I'll ask them to perhaps stand and give us a couple of comments after the video, and they're pretty excited about being on TV tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly. This has been a, this has been a very successful program, and this summer was no exception. Certainly, it gets better every year, I think. Number of students that were served, thirty students. Grades, K through four. Number of staff, sixteen. And the dates were basically every week in July, except right after July 4th, and it was 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM over at Wentworth. So, I would invite Lori and Megan to come on up and share any, anything that was different or new or exciting this year. Thanks for being here, by the way. Yes, you're gonna have to pull that down a little bit. Or use your teacher voice.
The first half is tutoring time, so they're tutored in their reading and literacy. But the second, we've made adjustments, and now it's inquiry-based learning. So, the children are given topics which they want to research. It's their choice within some parameters, and they are free to choose what they're going to present and teach other children and parents and teachers at the end.
And the staff is wonderful. Really energetic. Great to work with. Great people.
Any questions?
Any comments, questions?
Uh, which one of you recorded the song?
I have one question. So, your groups, you have a teacher, and are they paired off with two students of the similar age, or does it just depend on their reading level?
For the first hour, we tried to pair the children off based on the similar level. The second hour, though, they get to be in their interest group, so they're all mixed and they help each other.
Oh, perfect. Anyone else?
Yes. You know there are reading groups coming in because the teachers have told you. How do you measure their progress, or do you measure their progress at the reading, summer reading program?
They're assessed at the beginning of the program, but we do not assess at the end. We're there to kind of keep that summer slide from happening, but in four weeks, two hours a day, we don't expect enormous growth, other than fun and wanting to read.
That, that self-esteem.
The self-esteem.
And, and have you, from say, last year's group, uh, seen, have the teachers of students who were in last year's group seen progress in the classroom during the past school year? Or do you know that?
We don't know that. We just know from some of the parents that we bumped into just yesterday. We bumped into a parent who, his child came from second grade and went into third grade. Very shy, doesn't like to speak. We just found out that she was speaking in front of the class for the first time in third grade, so we felt like we did our job.
Ms. DeCassio?
Um, in all seriousness, by the way, maybe you can walk me through the process of how do you choose which kids can, can participate in that program? Is it open to everybody, or is there a screening process?
It's, all children in academic support or special services in the area of literacy are invited. So, the invitations go out to several hundred children, and then from there, it's parents, you know, they have to sign their child up, and we try to take as many as we can. It depends on our staffing numbers.
We did have more children this year than last year.
And you're, is that typically the ceiling that you run up to, is staffing levels versus enrollment? Or is there?
We try to take as many as we can. Trying to make the groups two to three. Once they get to three, they're not getting their needs met.
Christine?
Just an observation. I know in the past, my kids, years and years ago, had done USM, and I know that there's a time commitment, so some of that becomes an issue for parents who say can't every day in the month of July do that, and, you know, it's slightly frowned upon if you're not attending all the time. It's sort of like the Jump Start kindergarten program, because really, you're gonna miss out on three days worth, and then you're behind everyone else.
Exactly. It is a big commitment.
Well worth, well worth the commitment, I might say, when, when we did it with our kids, so.
This is a, a model as well that has been adopted by other districts. They've, they've taken the Scarborough model, and they've tried it, so it's being replicated as well.
So, I think it's just awesome that we have a program like this to be offered to that many students. It's, it's really terrific. I loved all the props, the dioramas, the, all the different paintings and things. It was clear that the kids were much more involved than just hearing a story or reading a story themselves. And I just have to ask you, that joint, you know that you use?
PVC piping?
In the basement of your house?
Yes, yes.
I just wondered, is that just a fake prop, or was that a real recording inside with, that matches the story?
We call it, in technical terms, a whisper phone. So, as the children speak quietly and whisper, it magnifies into their ear, so it sounds louder.
No recording whatsoever. It's just their voice.
So, they just hear themselves reading.
So, they're, they're reading the story, and it's going in this phone into their ear?
Exactly.
The computer quietly.
So, just in case my husband's watching, it's a real tool in education, Roger. Oh, thank you so much for.
Thanks for being.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second in my report, um, there was around mid-August, a press release that came from the, the Supreme Judicial Court, and the Court Chief Justice Lee Softley announced that, that the main Supreme Judicial Court would hold court and hear nine cases at three main high schools in October. Um, we're excited to let people know that Scarborough High School is one of the three schools, and on Thursday, October 8th, um, starting at 9:00 AM, the court will be at the Scarborough High School, and that was at the invitation of Senator Amy Voak. Um, and, so it starts at 9 o'clock, and then the next two appeals will begin at 9:45 and 10:30 AM that morning. This goes back a little bit, beginning back in 2005, the court has held oral, oral arguments in actual appellate cases in high schools around the state. So, just to comment from the Chief Justice. Chief Justice Lee Softley said, "We're pleased to be able to hold court at three more high schools this year, and appreciate the invitation of the schools and the legislators who issued the invitations. Over the years, the court has traveled from Bedford to Fort Kent, from Freiburg to Eastport, with many stops in between across our large and beautiful state. Creating a real courtroom in a high school takes great effort on the part of the faculty and the school staff. We appreciate the work that is involved to bring this particular real-life civics lesson to main high school students. Of course, the high point for the court is the chance to meet and talk with main students. While each community and school is different, we continue to be impressed each year with the quality and level of interest that main students from all around the state bring to these hearings." So, that would be something to put on your calendar if you have some interest. Um, I think I actually sent, maybe sent this out to you electronically anyway.
One question about that. How, can students attend? Do they, is it like by class, will they go? And so, it has to be the choice of the teacher? I mean, how?
If students are free at the high school, I'm sure that they can, they're free to go.
Well, I was wondering, say, like if a phys ed during the time that, there's one of the court cases are gonna be heard, could a student be excused and go, or does it have to be like a whole class en masse? Or will kids from the middle school be able to come up?
I don't, I don't exactly know how David will handle this. We've not really done it before.
Right.
But if yours, if a student has a particular, a particular interest in being part of it, they should be letting folks know, um, as they, as they get started, particularly in their, probably in their history classes or civics classes, so.
Yeah, sorry, just along the similar lines, um, I, I think it's a great opportunity for the community as a whole to participate in a program like this. Um, I assume it's gonna be closed to the public?
It, it's a high school function.
It is a high school function, okay. Um, and then?
The press is invited, so.
Right, but I mean, it's not, it's not open to the community for anybody to stop in, and, okay, so that's.
I, I just think that there's other security issues and so on.
Understood. I just wanted that to be clear, that this is an in-house?
Right.
In-house program only for the high school students for their benefit. Um, and the second question I have is, do you know if we have any modifications or any requirements that we need to do physically or anything to the, to the auditorium to accommodate?
Joanne, do you know? I don't know any specific details. I think that if there are accommodations needed, you know, for example, an interpreter or whatever, um, I, that would be dealt with by the court. So, we just need to, to do, follow a sort of a prescribed setup.
Okay.
It's been done at other places, and I think it's just a, a prescribed setup that needs to be in place for them.
Thank you.
Yeah, kind of, kind of fun and, and interesting. Um, so, uh, yeah, that, that music reminds me, actually, of a, of a song that we used for one of our get-togethers. Um, it wasn't a start, start to school, although this start to school, in trying to just, you know, put behind us a protracted budget season and so on, and basically shaking things off, we have had a fabulous start to school. And I'll just give you some quick updates. Eight Corners had a wonderful start to school. The kindergarten rooms were especially calm and looked like rooms full of first graders. That is of, of the highest magnitude, a comment to those kindergarten students. Those who went to Jump Start and Camp already knew what to do. It was really impressive. Everyone stepped up to help the students and the new staff. Kelly Mullen-Martin, in terms of Blue Point and Pleasant Hill, also enjoying smooth openings. Our buildings are clean, organized, and ready for students, thanks to our maintenance, custodial, front office, and teaching staff. Uh, Blue Point has welcomed forty-one new kindergarten students with a total enrollment of a hundred ninety-two. Pleasant Hill has welcomed forty-nine new kindergarten students with a total enrollment of a hundred and sixty-nine, and they're thrilled to embark on a new school year. Um, over at Wentworth, Wentworth School greeted two hundred and eight very excited third graders on Tuesday. The faculty plan what's called Third Grade Discovery Day, and teachers from all grades take classes on tours, and students meet their allied arts teachers, student advocates, and front office staff. So, they, that's their, their step-up day, really. They enjoyed their first experience at the Wolf Cub Cafe and the playground. The entire staff greeted all students on Wednesday and Thursday, and the older students were excited, were excellent and excited role models for our new class. The opening could not have gone better at Wentworth, and Kelly Crosby is doing well, but in her brief absence, as she mends a bit, John Thurlow and the staff over there are doing a really excellent job. Um, at the middle school, I could have Barbara present hers, but I'll do it, I'll do it for her. Okay, middle school's off to a great start. Students are finding their way to new teachers and classes while making new friends in the process. Students and staff are figuring out the new and complicated schedule. Hmm. The sixth graders are enjoying their newfound freedoms, traveling to and from, of course, they're moving from the, the, what is that, Ab- Abernaki? No.
The sixth grader is following.
The sixth graders are coming. Are coming, right. So, they're coming into the big building now, so they're finding, they're finding new freedom, traveling to and from classes between their, their classrooms and the main building. And a few spent their weekly food allowance on their first day. Now, I'm wondering if that has something, something to do with Mr. Esposito.
I have, let me, I'll pipe in right there. Today, my, both of my children got hot lunch and raved about the fresh dough pizza. Rave.
So, Mr. Esposito is, is making his mark. The students followed directions, behaved admirably during the first evacuation drill. Wow, that was pretty quick. Um, all of this was off to a great beginning. At Scarborough High School, had a hugely successful start to the new school year. Highlights included freshman and new student orientation day on Tuesday, September 1st. Senior parade from their parking lot to project graduation-sponsored senior breakfast to start the first day of school for all students, when all of the students were there, grades nine through twelve. That culminated with a senior picture for the yearbook taken over at Memorial Park, and students and staff had started the school year excited for the potential we have as individuals, says Mr. Creach, and collectively as a school. They're focused on three goals for students and staff at the high school. Student-centered learning at the core of all that we do and why we do it. Moving Scarborough High School from "good" to "great," end quotes, and making a large school feel small by building positive relationships and establishing strong connections. So, it was a very, a very positive and terrific start to school. I think I have just one more item for you, and that is, um, logistics. Uh, I said that I would follow up today on the plans for a fall school board workshop. Um, I had suggested that we place that after the election. Uh, we'll have a couple of new folks joining us, and, um, and I had suggested that, that would be November 19th. Uh, does anyone have a big conflict with that, or if you do, can you let me know as soon as possible?
Or you think during the day, or evening?
Um, I'll read you my. Um, 4:00 PM and run to 7:30 or so. So, it would just be an early start, starting at 4:00.
So, then will we still have a board meeting that night? Because that, that's the third Thursday, right? Or am I mistaken? I could be mistaken.
I don't, I don't know if that's a regular board meeting. Maybe we could look it up on a.
It is, it is.
It is. So, it would be, it would just be an early start, and then heading into our board meeting at 7:00. Okay?
Ms. DeCassio?
I just wanted to know if there will be any postings on the internet or the web or our, our page from the opening day festivities, um, in terms of videos or anything like that? From, from, from the, I think it was the staff day, the beginning, the first day from the staff day? I'm just wondering if there'll be any, anything?
Could be something. I've not seen, I've not seen the video from the day yet, but it's been promised.
Well, I think, I think it's always good to, as we've been trying to do.
Your private video's taken, I know that.
To celebrate our accomplishments as well, as not just to highlight our, our, our areas of opportunities, but I think celebrating our accomplishments are, are good as well.
That would pleasure you on YouTube and very quickly, Mr. Sathon.
I have to say, when you look at some other school districts that have done this, we by far.
Oh, you were.
There you go.
A lot of fine dancers, but I wasn't expecting. It was pretty good.
I was, it was very impressive. I, I thought it was, it was very well put together and a testament to the, the camaraderie and the teamwork.
And the good nature.
And the good nature.
Of that team. Yeah, they're willing to put themselves out there, when we're not, we're not all very, all that comfortable doing that sort of stuff.
You might be going on the road in a few weeks.
So, um, there is, there is supposed to be an official video. I know that there were unofficial videos that have already been circulated, but, um, there was an official video that's, that's coming, and I'll share, I will definitely make sure that gets appropriately shared.
We could sell copies.
Oh, fundraiser.
There you go.
Fundraise.
There you go.
Maybe we should just take it on the road and.
There you go. These are all really, um, these are all really very creative ideas that I don't think that we've thought about, actually. Um, but that would conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for the chair's report, I just have a few things. Um, that Drummond-Woodson webinar. I'm, I'm pretty sure that the way it's gonna work is, uh, we will register for all three sessions. You could come to any one you want, or two, or three, and they're on three consecutive Wednesdays from 5:30 to 6:30. We'll do it up here in central office, and the topic is labor negotiations, so anyone can sit.
So, we found out yesterday, just from another meeting we had with someone from Drummond-Woodson, that once we say that we're gonna be a part of the webinar, people can watch the videos whenever. Was that your understanding, too?
That was my understanding, that they would be made available once we were paid for.
Once we paid the fee.
If I couldn't make number three, say, as I noticed that I might have a conflict, then I would be able to watch that. I don't know if I'd have to come up to central office and do that, or get a login or something, but.
That'd be interesting. I mean, do we own it then? Because, you know, it could be February, and you wanna go back to session two.
I'm not, I'm not sure, but it, it was our understanding that if you can't. For a certain period of time, that it'd keep it open.
That makes sense.
We can't be there for that Wednesday, commit to that time slot, that we would be able to watch it whenever.
Was there not some discussion, the possibility of pushing it out until after the November elections?
That was up to Drummond-Woodson.
Yeah, Drummond-Woodson.
But there's been discussion.
Oh, okay, that has been.
Because other, other school boards evidently have been in touch with them and saying, "Why don't you hold it after the November election, so that new people on school boards can participate?" So, that is evidently, uh, under discussion at Drummond-Woodson.
Okay, we'll see if we hear anything. No.
Which is, I mean, it does, it does make sense to do some of those things that would be valuable for new board members after they get sworn in.
Same with MSBA conferences. I always put that on my, my comment card, that they do it the last weeks of October, and then new board members get elected and take the opportunity.
But for forty-three years, they've done it.
So, there's no changing that.
At this, at this time.
Isn't that the definition of insanity, of nature, or just?
Two other quick things. Um, just looking at the recent legislation passed in the state, LG 1235, a resolve to strengthen standards-based diplomas. Um, so this resolve creates the Maine Proficiency Education Council to study and make recommendation for a five-year plan for a full implementation of proficiency-based education requirements across the state. So, that's kind of something new that's, that's come up in the creation of this, a group that will look at this. But just in thinking about it myself, it's great that we're doing the NIASC work now, because that's gonna have a lot to do with proficiency-based in terms of how, the discussions that are being held at the high school, and so we'll kind of be on, on our way, even though the council's just forming on this topic. But it looks like it's moving ahead for proficiency-based education in this state. And LG 1276, an act to improve educational assessments for main students. You may have heard of this already, and this bill ended the use of the Smarter Balance Assessment, which is what we just purchased in the state this past school year, and gave for the first time this last end of winter and spring. So, that kind of means that instead of having another year after where you can compare the scores of your child, you, we're probably gonna get the scores of our kids, but it's not gonna be applicable to apples, apples in the future. And then, apparently, they're going to come up with, they don't know what, a new kind of assessment for the kids in the state of Maine.
That was my question. It was more, I guess, directed at Dr. Entwistle, too, of do we, do we have options for a, a replacement assessment, or are we gonna wait and see what the state? I mean, I know we went with a, uh, didn't we go with a different program? No, it was the new, it was the new one that changed.
We're obligated to follow the state's protocol, so, um, so we'll wait and see what the state comes up with.
And that's all I have for you tonight. Committee reports. Anyone have anything in particular?
I, I can go. I, I spoke briefly with Counselor Baybine on the Town Council Finance Committee. He'd like to bring us to the, the joint committees together sometime next week. He'd like to bring us the joint committees together sometime next week, if possible. I'll get with, with you Donna and you Christine to figure out days. I think he wants to shoot sometime around 4 o'clock, I think is a good time for him. Just pick two dates and we'll, we'll go to them with those and see what they're available with. The purpose of the discussion is going to be to look at a, I believe they want to hire a consultant to come in and do a, an evaluation on just the lessons learned from our joint sessions together. So I'm waiting for some confirmation on specifically what the scope of that is going to be, to make sure that it is just that and not something else, and to look at costs and things like that. So I'm hoping to have that information before we have the meeting next week. If not, I'm sure that will be a, the topic of discussion when we're there. So, other than that, no, finance hasn't met since the, since the budget. And I think we're probably, we're due for year-end closeout here pretty quick, I think. So I'm sure we'll be, we get, we'll be getting to that fairly soon and wrapping that up and presenting that as well.
Are there any other committee reports? Yes.
The negotiations committee got together this week to plan our strategies moving forward. And Maine School, Maine School Boards Association will be meeting on the 19th of September. And I have been nominated to serve another term now that I decided that I will seek reelection at Scarborough.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I, I guess we should let everybody know that Maine School Boards Association at their state convention gives an award, not annually, but frequently, to a business that has contributed to further education. And we are nominating CPM Construction and Paul Cosell for that award this year. And for those of you who don't recall, Paul Cosell is the chief operating officer for that company and spent countless hours over four years as the chair of the Wentworth Building Committee. And his company allowed that to happen. The chief financial officer of that company is a gentleman named Tim Willett, who is also a Scarborough resident and who also gave tremendous amount of time as a member of the committee. And when you go into the Wentworth School, if you look at the benches and the table in the office that made from the elm tree that used to be on Route 1, Paul Cosell had his folks do those over the winter and kept his, as he said, he could keep his crew busy doing those benches. He gave and continues to contribute to this community. And we believe that he deserves that award and we'll keep our fingers crossed.
All right, good. 8.0, seeing our student representatives. We won't have a report unless you have something. All right, new business, 9.0. Do I have a motion regarding the minutes, the meeting minutes from August 20th?
Move approval as printed?
Second.
Any corrections, discussion? All in favor? Six. And 9.2 appointments? We want to do these one by one?
Uh huh. And that's generally how we've done. It won't be the long list like before. We're actually catching up. And, and I will provide for you the remaining job openings when I'm done. So we start with 9.2.1. This is Wentworth STEM Science Technology Engineering Mathematics Teacher Sarah Athurn has been nominated to fill this newly created position. She received her degree in sociology from the University of Southern Maine, where she also expects to complete her master's degree in teaching and learning this May. She's been working at the South Portland Schools and the recommendation is to appoint Sarah Athurn to this position at Wentworth.
Move approval? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six.
9.2.2, this is middle school social studies and science teacher. Brianna Bullard has been nominated to fill this position that's been created by a resignation. Mrs. Bullard received her Bachelor of Arts degree from Sienna College and her Master of Science of Teaching at Moyn College. She completed her student teaching in New York and most recently was a grade seven long-term substitute over in Gorham. Their administrative recommendation is to appoint Brianna Bullard as middle school social studies and science teacher.
Approval? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six.
Item 9.2.3, this is at the Eight Corners School, .6 music teacher. Erin Burns is nominated to fill this position due to a resignation. Ms. Burns received her Bachelor of Arts degree in music from the University of Southern Maine. She's been a music teacher in Haldale Elementary School in Hollowell. And the recommendation is to appoint Erin Burns as the Eight Corners School, .6 music teacher.
Move approval? Second.
Discussion? Yes.
Just a quick question. Is she going to be full-time? And this is just augmenting her, getting her to full-time? Or is this still a part-time position?
It's a part-time.
It is still part-time?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's refilling a part-time position.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Six.
Item 9.2.4, Wentworth School Classroom Teacher. Erin Huth is nominated to fill this position. It's been created by a retirement. Ms. Huth earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology and anthropology with a double major in elementary education from Roger Williams University. She received her master's degree in education from the University of North Carolina and taught for several years in schools in North Carolina. The recommendation is to appoint Erin Huth as a Wentworth School Classroom Teacher.
Move approval? Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Six.
Item 9.2.5, Wentworth School Classroom Teacher again. This is Richard Selinger, nominated to fill the position that's been created by a retirement. Mr. Selinger earned his bachelor's degree in communication from the University of Southern Maine and also completed their ETEP program. We love, we love those folks that come through that ETEP program. Mr. Selinger was a grade three classroom teacher in Yarmouth for five years. It's exciting to, to have Richard Selinger as a Wentworth School Classroom Teacher, and that's the recommendation.
Move approval? Second.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor? Six.
And the last appointment is 9.2.6, High School Middle Teacher. This is .4 of a teacher. This is Richard Wesley, nominated to fill this position created by a resignation. Mr. Wesley studied at Loyola University where he earned his undergraduate degree in English and Philosophy. He earned his Master of Arts degree in Philosophy from McGill University. Mr. Wesley taught English at St. Thomas High School in New Hampshire and as well at Cheveris High School. He's also been an adjunct instructor at the University of New England. The recommendation is to appoint Richard Wesley as this high school, .4 English teacher.
Move approval? Second.
Question?
I, yeah. I just want to clarify one thing. Correction on the sheet. It says high middle school, so. All right. Okay.
He's at, he's at high school.
Yep.
Thank you.
All in favor? Six.
So just because I suspect that you would like to know, and I wanted to know, where are we with our hiring? We have three special ed, ed techs, ed tech threes that are in the process of being hired. One middle school building ed tech three, again, in process. Middle School Study Center ed tech three. Bus drivers, two of them specifically, and two food service workers. So it's, it's essentially the teaching staff is completed, which is good.
So are those because of resignations or were the...
These, these would all be because of resignations.
Late resignations, okay.
And then, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead. This is another number. Is the...
9.1. I forgot middle school.
Right, the, the middle school, which one do we start with here?
Leaders, 9.2.8.
Right, high school department heads, middle school leaders, Wentworth lead teachers, primary school lead teachers and administrative designee, and the K8 sped consulting teachers. And you have a full spreadsheet that gives you the names of all of the folks. Many of these, in fact, I believe if I'm correct, it's all but a couple of these are pretty much folks who have continued in these positions through the years. And a couple of people are, are new, although I would be hard pressed to tell you which one exactly are the new ones. But the recommendation is to make these appointments in terms of stipend contracts for leadership positions as presented on this, on this spreadsheet.
Move approval? Second.
Yes, Jackie.
Just explain to me again, please, what is an inquiry leader?
It's, it's really just a team leader. Are you asking Barbara specifically? I see you looking at...
Doesn't matter who answers it, I just...
I think, I think the inquiry teams are really, we're trying, we're basically trying to keep our organizations in the schools looking like the work that we're doing as, as teachers and professional staff. So rather than just saying the blue team, or the green team, or the orange team, they're, they're now called inquiry teams. Barbara?
I'm going to get to that more.
Okay, sure.
So we're setting ourselves up for inquiry-based instruction. So the inquiry team leads not only facilitate two meetings a week. One is around students and making sure that students' needs are met on that small team. They're also building, they're trying to connect curriculums. And they're heading towards inquiry-based projects which would integrate all the curriculums on that little team. That makes sense.
The reason I'm asking, and I had a good idea what it was. The public doesn't know what the heck we're talking about sometimes.
I know.
And that is sometimes very difficult moving forward when we're trying to explain what we're trying to do, if the public doesn't understand. I would guess that even, many of our parents don't understand what that actually means. So I think that the more we can explain it, the more we can talk about it, and the more we can bring it forward, the better off we're going to be.
And I think the parents will see it more as we develop our curriculums. Because the science-based, the science curriculum is all inquiry-based, the social studies is all inquiry-based, and the kids are using that language and it will get home more, at least for middle school.
Good. Thank you very much.
We're even hearing that from Reading Academy.
I heard that too, yes.
Reading, Reading Academy was, was organized, it's just a different way of organizing kids, is all it is. And it's around, and it's creating an opportunity for more experiential and project-based learning. And that, and the teams at Wentworth, specifically at Wentworth and the high school are organized by name as inquiry teams.
And learning communities too, we're all doing, using the same language.
And I understand that. But I think that we must continually, as a board, keep it in the forefront.
Sorry, just one quick question, and either to Dr. Entwistle or to Barbara. You've got one opening on the seventh grade. It says open and on hold. Is...
All right, so this is all a new organization last year, and we're just re-looking at what we're doing. So I am going to move towards, if they are a community leader, they will also be the inquiry leader for no additional stipend.
Okay, okay. And that, is that a, is that a model you're going to try and, and parallel with the other grades as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that explanation.
And I, you're good.
I heard you.
I just wanted to clarify to you, Dr. Entwistle had said there were some new leaders, but those are actual people, not new positions.
Correct.
These positions are the exact same as they've been last year.
Exactly.
It's just a new person maybe filling that position.
Thank you for that clarification. That's true, yes.
It kind of has come up a lot, what Jackie was saying, that sometimes we speak in language in terms that people don't understand. Now that we have wonderfully integrated and beautiful websites, why don't we put a frequently asked questions tab on the website? Or like things like vocabulary, like what is an inquiry team? Put an answer right there. Because when somebody reads it in the Scarborough leader, or they read it in a newsletter that comes home with their kids, they might not understand what the terms are, even though we know it's just another way of identifying groups of kids and teachers and learning. It might be beneficial to everyone out there and later to us when we're trying to explain our needs, if we have clearly defined what we're talking about in terms that people understand. So now that our websites are wonderful and working together and I have no trouble navigating around and page to page and tabs, they all make great sense. If we had a frequently asked questions or a vocabulary tab or something that would draw people's attention, frequently asked questions, I think people are used to seeing on websites. Click here and you would, anything that would be a new concept or new vocabulary or something, it would be easy just to plug it in there. I'd say that, not being the one who maintains the website, so I'm sorry, whoever's job that is, I just gave you a new one. But I, I really think it, in the long run, would be beneficial to the school department to have that there. May also be helpful to put a, if your question's not here, a link to somebody's email on the board of... Right, we'll find out for you. Yeah, ask, if you don't see your question here, email one of the board members with your question.
Kelly Murphy.
Yeah, apparently. I'm sure Jen would be happy to set that link up.
It'd be auto break.
So that has come right, right back around to you.
Yeah, good. That's my job, that's fine.
I'm going to cross this out now. On my list.
And it might be a good idea too, in the future, have some students demonstrate what is inquiry-based learning. And so if we did maybe a workshop one night where we took 20 minutes or something to see some of the work, so that people can actually demonstrate their learning and help us learn what it's all about. Anybody else?
I just want to make certain that our students are not vilified in any way because of some of the terminology that we're using. And I only use the term that we had somebody write a blog in the newspaper talking about what are life skills? Well, life skills for our children are extremely important. And had that person been able to ask somebody what that terminology means, we, we had parents who were offended by that, you know? And so I'm just trying to keep it simple if, if we can, because it's our students who suffer in the long run if we don't make it clear.
Well, we have very capable leaders in every school that can answer any question, and I know that they are answering questions every day.
Yes, I know.
So if someone has a particular question about what is this or what is that, all they need to do at the middle school is to speak with these two folks or...
All the teachers.
Or any, any, or, yes, ask the, ask the teacher. Right, start with the teacher. But, but people are always happy and available to answer questions.
And in fairness, I feel like the school board members are also quite available, especially to that particular blogger, and could have asked the question. We've answered many before.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
There we go.
Okay. So do I have a motion for, George, do we have to get the motion?
I don't even know what we're talking about.
Move approval as printed. We had discussions, so now we're...
Discussions, we need to vote.
We're ready to vote.
All in favor? Six. Very good. And 10.0. Do I have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA 40560 for the purpose of discussing both the superintendent contract and to discuss the administrative team contract, not to return to public session?
So move.
Second.
Very good, all in favor? Excellent. And a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
We are currently adjourned.
Thank you. Dr. Entwistle, was this last, it doesn't matter. Was this last session just an FYI?
Ms. Perry found that and asked that it be shared with everyone.
So this is just an FYI?
That's an FYI that we... That's an FYI that was in the main biz.
It was very nice, yes. I was reading that.